If you guys are talking, we cannot hear you.
I just unmuted it. We're about to get started here.
You can hear us now, Harmony?
Loud and clear. Sorry about that.
Alrighty. We good? Alright. Alright, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Saldovia City Council, Monday, June 16th. Time is 6:01 PM. And we'll go ahead and do roll call. Langbart.
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Rojas?
Here.
Peyton?
Here.
And Keith Lee is absent at the moment. She should be joining us here after a bit. Okay, so we have four out of five council members present with Keith Lee currently absent. We'll go ahead and do pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to flag the United States of America, under our public religious stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item C, excuse absences, we have none at the moment. Item D, agenda approval. Go ahead and look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Meg.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and approve tonight's consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda. And do we have a second?
That'd be a second on tonight's agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Langbart to approve tonight's agenda with a second by Rojas. Any further discussion on the agenda before we vote? Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and vote on the approval of tonight's agenda. All those in favor. Langbart?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Rojas?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye.
And that's all we have. Motion passes four in the affirmative and zero opposed with one absent. Item E, consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are approved with a single motion, no discussion, and one vote. Council member made a request to remove any item for discussion in a separate vote. Items removed from the consent agenda will be placed under new business. Tonight's consent agenda consists of the minutes of the regular meeting from May 27th. Those are in your laydown. No ordinances and two resolutions. First one, item 3A, resolution 25-51. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, awarding requests for proposals, RFP 05-2025. Rabies Vista Stormwater Infrastructure Improvements, Project HDR Engineering, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute the appropriate documents. Second resolution is resolution 25-52, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, awarding requests for proposals, RFP number 6-2025. Saldovia Stormwater Infrastructure Improvements Project to HDR Engineering, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute the appropriate documents. That is our consent agenda tonight. Does any member wish to remove any item for further discussion? Okay, hearing none. I'll go ahead and look for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Rojas to approve tonight's consent agenda with a second by Peyton. Any further discussion on the consent agenda before we vote? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor. Langbart?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Rojas?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye.
And Keith Lee?
Aye.
Okay, let the record reflect, Ashley has also joined us. Motion passes with five in the affirmative and zero opposed. Alright, that was item E. We'll move on to item F, mayoral proclamations, none tonight. Item G, public presentations prior notice. Each presenter has up to 10 minutes. Tonight, we have Michael Nemeth with APIA. He is also our VPSO Public Safety Coordinator. And if you go over 10, don't sweat it. So we're good. We only get to see you every so often. So, welcome, Michael.
Is it on? Okay, sorry. I just wanted to take a few minutes to give the council an update on the program and the officers of Saldovia. We're looking pretty good for fiscal year 26. I haven't received my actual budget from the state yet. But it appears that program-wide for us will get a little more money than we did last year. Not quite what I asked for as usual. But we have enough funding to easily support the officers in Saldovia and our other currently filled locations. And we should have no financial issues moving forward. I spoke with Heidi this morning, and we'll be able to even cover the vehicle fuel for the VPSOs for fiscal year 26. So that won't need to come out of the city's budget. Appreciate the city being able to do that last year and previously until now. And hopefully, we'll be able to continue that beyond FY '26. Also, I was able to acquire a patrol vehicle for the VPSOs. That's at Alaska Safety being outfitted right now. And I'm praying that we have it in the community by the end of July. We should have had it here already. They just had an issue with one of the parts they were installing and had to reorder that part. So hopefully, the vehicle will be in the community here shortly. That'll give another patrol vehicle for the officers to use. Trying to think what else. Also, Dewey, the newest officer, has completed his emergency medical ETT training and his fire training. He'll be attending the July Academy to complete his law enforcement training. Once he completes that, his basic training will be finished and he'll be attending additional training as time progresses. Amy recently completed her method of instruction training, which is a week-long, pretty intense class on how to teach classes. So now she has a much better knowledge on instructing. And she's able to actually teach APSC certified law enforcement type classes also. So that is the basics for the Saldovia program. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any at this time.
Great, thank you, Michael. Any questions from anyone on council for Michael tonight?
Getting off easy. So, well, I won't keep you. I know you have an agenda. And if there's nothing from anybody.
Looks like we got one from Harmony.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Harmony.
I will defer to Vivian if she would like to go first. That would be helpful for me.
Okay, thank you. No, I was just gonna, I thought he was gonna give us a little bit more spiel. But no, I was just gonna let you know, we really appreciate the VPS service that we've been getting. And I guess my question to you is, is there anything that we need to do, Saldovia, to help you out any more than what's happening up to this point? And also, what would have been, for people who want, when I got back to town, I had some people complaining about kids driving, not being of legal age. What is, what is the process for people to get a hold of and file complaints? Is that just a 911 call? What do you advise people?
You know, I would not use 911 for something like that unless somebody is driving recklessly or you believe somebody is intoxicated in driving. It, we had, we had a bit of a conversation about that this morning, the mayor, Heidi and I, discussing that. You know, it's, it's a tricky thing because you have ordinances that have been on the books for years, but really haven't been enforced year, for years, or enforced intermittently. And we were discussing the possibility of kind of having a a public awareness campaign that these ordinances are now going to be enforced on a regular basis. And now we can enforce a lot of the, like ATV, those type of things. But VPSOs in their job description do not do traffic stops as we know traffic stops in, say, Anchorage. And they're not trained to do traffic stops. They're not trained in radar. So speeding's a little more difficult. But when it comes to reckless driving or driving on, you know, that speeds that are unsafe and prudent for the driving conditions at the time, those are things we can address. You know, we were discussing, say, minors driving. And we were also discussing, it's odd that Saldovia is considered on the road system, and I don't know why. In other communities in rural Alaska, pretty much those laws don't pertain. And if there aren't city ordinances, you have children who are driving four-wheelers. It, it's pretty much extremely common in rural Alaska. Now, if we're gonna do it, and there are the ordinances, the city ordinances that exist, if we're gonna enforce, I, I just feel that the community needs to be made aware prior to that enforcement, that they do exist and we are going to enforce them. Because if they haven't been enforced, even though they're on the books, to just surprise a community with enforcement is unrealistic. You know, all it's gonna do is cause problems. But once those, once the announcements are made and there's enough time that everyone who should know knows, we can enforce those. And we were discussing using written warnings to start and then moving on from there. So those things we can do for the city of Saldovia, unlike a lot of other communities in rural Alaska, because they don't have their ordinances in Umat, which is required for us to enforce, just like it would be for troopers to enforce.
Right. I guess in the villages and out west, in different areas, is it different because Saldovia's got a DOT State of Alaska Road?
You know?
For, for us than any other place, or is it?
That's a good question, Vivian, because I am just not sure what the difference actually is. You know, because I know DOT provides graders for a lot of the communities in our region, and they have not DOT employees, but locals who I guess are acting DOT employees, you know, grading the roads or grading the runway and things like that. So I, I just, I don't know what the difference is. We were talking about that this morning. And I'm just not sure, because, you know, in communities I've worked in and communities we have in our region, you know, it's not required to register your vehicle. It's not required to have insurance, you know, because they're considered off-the-road system. People can get off-the-road system driver's license that are just a written test and not a road test. But they can't drive in Anchorage, but they can drive in Nelson Lagoon. So it's, I don't, I don't know what, what makes Saldovia different than Nelson Lagoon or St. George Island.
Right. Well, thank you very much. Yeah, the, the concern was mainly what I was hearing about is kids who are too young to be on a four-wheeler or whatever. So it sounds like it's being addressed at the city office. So I appreciate that. And again, thank you so much for your service you're giving to Saldovia.
Thank you, Vivian. And I know that Amy has, you know, addressed some issues with, with the children and then have gone to their parents to address that. And, you know, discussing the written warning, you know, that way we have documentation of that on both sides where, you know, Amy will have a copy of that. And then the written warning will be given to the child's parents. That way they're aware of it. And that way we can track that better. And then we can go to, you know, from the warning to a fine if necessary, or whatever the case may be. Hopefully, once this, you know, we want, we want to treat everyone the same always. So, you know, once it begins, and the first person is given the written warning or fined, everybody will be given a written warning or fined. And hopefully, that in itself will tamp down some of the, the problems we're having and the complaints you're hearing. So.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Vivian.
No, I just gonna say, no, I, I appreciate what you're saying. And I think we're on the right track. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vivian. Harmony?
Alright, I'm gonna follow up with what, I'm gonna follow Vivian on that. As a parent of four, I live right above the bridge. I would say the obvious difference between Saldovia and many of those other smaller communities is the requirements for the modern infrastructure that we have are run by a city entity and not a tribal entity. We have a, an enormous amount of summer people who come to this community. And those people do not respect the ordinances or safeties of locals. The amount of drunk driving that occurs in the summer is part of the culture here. Basically, that's, you know, it's miraculous that we haven't had more trauma injuries here. But two days, two consecutive days this weekend, I was walking down the street as an adult without my children, and I watched someone who could not have been 14, 12 at the most, driving with a smaller child, a five or six-year-old, looking down. So he was either looking at his phone, or he was looking at something that that other kid was doing. He was not looking at the road. He almost hit a dog and the kid was with that dog. And then the, the other day prior to that, there was just a little kid driving a four-wheeler across our, the bridge. These are children. They do not, should not be controlling a motor vehicle. We are not, we're not a fish camp. We're not a, you know, it's unsafe. It's unsafe for the kids who live here and who, and the people who live here year-round and respect basic traffic laws. You know, I don't know what we need to do to update our books in order to get this on the books. But we obviously need to be doing that. And we need to be putting out that information right now, because it is unfair that the kids who live here year-round then have to be aware of getting struck by moving vehicles because of summer people coming to the community or whoever they are and mistreating our community as a playground. It's not a playground. We live here. We should have the right to do that safely. And whatever we need to do as a city entity to make sure that your entity is able to enforce those laws, it needs to happen. And whatever we need to do as a city entity to support the VPSOs to enforce those laws, it needs to happen. Because I'm sorry, I have four small children, and I don't worry about them in so many ways that somebody in Anchorage has to worry about their small children. But I worry about them being able to cross the road safely in the summertime because of how much liberty people come and take on our roads. Okay, like, it's not okay. I don't like the, the, oh, it should be an off-the-road system. It's fine. People should be allowed to drive. No. A seven-year-old should not be in charge of a motorized vehicle unattended by an adult. And that is happening more and more frequently. I would never allow my seven-year-old to do that. You know, anybody who's watched a child die on the side of the road should know better than that.
No, I, I, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Harmony.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm just really, I'm, I'm shaking. I'm so upset. I've seen it. Every year, it becomes more and more prevalent. And my kids are getting older now. There's, they're 10 and seven and five, and they should be allowed to walk across town to go to their cousin's house. And I'm watching these kids fly around the corner. Is he looking at his cell phone? I don't know. Is he looking at the pedals? I don't know. Either way, that kid is unattended by an adult and driving unsafely. And I can't trust my kids to go down to Tata's without worrying that they're gonna get struck by somebody who has no right operating a vehicle.
I couldn't agree with you more, Harmony. And we were also discussing this morning that, about impoundment, if it came to that at some point for, for vehicles. I'm not sure. Heidi, do you know what the age is on your city ordinance for ATVs off the top of your head?
14 with a permit.
Okay, so, and I saw the flyer that says about a permit or a license.
Right. And so I, I understand the thought about date, and we should talk about it more. But I, I mean, we've been saying these are enforceable for years. So I think it just maybe reiterating, we can issue a new a, a new flyer tomorrow that says, you know, these will be enforced. We'll talk about it more. But yeah, I can sympathize with, we don't want more time.
No, yeah.
Like, right now. Like, support our officers. Give them whatever backup they need. Get it out now. It's already June. You know, July's on its way. We're gonna have solstice, like, 14 with a permit. I remember when I was a 14-year-old and having a permit meant you had to have an adult in a in a larger vehicle. But we weren't driving side-by-sides. We weren't driving passenger vehicles. We were driving four-wheelers. And maybe you could have one person on the back. Or if you were, you know, an older teenager being dumb, on a back road, you would do dumber things. But the kid, you know, a 12 or 14-year-old driving a six-passenger side-by-side, that is not, in my mind, negotiable. No, absolutely not. That is unsafe. I'm sorry. I know I'm being unprofessional right now, but I, I feel unprofessional because these, these are safe, traffic safety laws that are not unreasonable, and they should be enforceable here. And our kids should be as safe here as anywhere else.
And Harmony, you're certainly not being unprofessional. You're being passionate, and I get that way, way too often myself. So I, I, I understand that completely. When it comes to the vehicles and the age, that's something that the council and the city might have to address with another ordinance, because I'm not sure what yours specifically says.
Vehicles are the same as State of Alaska, 16 with a license.
Okay. So would, would you consider a side-by-side that?
No, not according to our ordinance. So there, we have there, we have an ATV ordinance, a four-wheeler ATV ordinance, 14 with a permit. We're four-wheelers and side-by-sides and 16 for a vehicle with a license.
So that, absolutely.
You know, here today, we had a little bit of an accident. It could have been, and Amy.
Today, a little bit of, it could have been a, Amy's coming around the blind corner headed west, and I'm in a Bobcat. I'm on my side of the road. One of our local residents is driving too fast, comes out around me, and she's coming in and almost running into each other. And so one of the problems, we have people here in this town, not outsiders, there are just as big of a problem of speeding, driving too fast as anybody comes to visit this place. And so I think there's the awareness. And I've talked to some of them, and they almost will get mad at you when they, you tell them, hey, you gotta slow down, you know? They don't want to acknowledge that. And so I don't know, you don't want to bite too hard, because, you know, we have people that come here to enjoy the freedom of doing these things. But they gotta be, you know, responsible people. And parents, on the other hand, are the ones that let them, the younger kids get away with this. And so I don't know how you can address that problem, but some of our local residents here are the worst offenders of driving too fast.
You know, I mean, we could have our officers, we can't, because we don't have radar and we can't support that in court, we, we can't charge them necessarily, like, write them a ticket, but we can stop them and talk to them. You know, have that conversation, like, like you said. We were discussing that, the curve earlier today. I, I experienced that, just, I always try to figure out the best way to walk when I'm walking, you know? So they, people can see me and I can see them. So I, I understand that. And, you know, I think if we just, as we start to lean on people a little, you know, be it children on four-wheelers or adults in the car, hopefully, we have the positive response we'd like to have, where people slow down. You know, if somebody, like I said, is driving recklessly, they can be charged with that. And if there's a child in the car, that's, that's even a greater charge, because that would be reckless endangerment and child endangerment. So, you know, those are things we can enforce. The key is, you know, with having one or two officers, we, we can't be everywhere all the time. So we really need the timely calls. You know, be it to Amy or Dewey, whatever the case may be. We were talking today, when I was in the field for 10 years, people report DUIs four days later. You know, somebody driving intoxicated. I can't do a thing about that. And that person was out driving four days earlier where they could have killed somebody or themselves. So, you know, I, I can't emphasize that enough. I, I think, you know, in a small community, people try to be kinder to their neighbors than they necessarily should be, because we, you have to live in a small space and everyone wants to try to get along. But there, there comes a time where, like Harmony was saying, you know, she, i- if things are that bad that she's that passionate, people need to talk about it, you know? And we need to be able to get on that as soon as we can. And, you know, being able to stop and, and do the enforcement on the children on the ATVs. And if it means, you know, I've taken kids' keys, you know, you pull the key out of it, you say, I'll drive you home, you go home, you pull it off to the side of the road, you give it to the parents and say, this is what they were doing. You know? You need to go move the vehicle off the road, but Charlie shouldn't be driving it, whatever the case may be. So I think if we work together, you know, my, my officers and the community members, you know, I think we can hopefully you know, quell this problem before it becomes bigger than it already is. So.
I, you know, Michael, that, you know, it's kind of a unique situation, because three months out of the year, Main Street turns into a sidewalk. And yet, some of the local people still have things to do, and they're not part of the fun that everybody's having. They're just trying to get the work done. So that's where some of it comes.
Yeah. And I understand that. All the other times I've been here have been on the shoulder season, either really early spring or fall. And today was the first day that I've seen people here, like, on the street. And when I was coming from the ferry, when Amy picked me up, you know, half of the folks who got off the ferry with me were in the road. And we're trying to go around that same curve you spoke of, and someone's coming the other direction. And we're basically just rubbernecking behind pedestrians on the street. So I, I, I understand completely. In the two, in the communities I lived in rural Alaska, we didn't have that problem. So, and, and I see that as being a problem. And, you know, we were discussing today, you know, what better way, what the city was talking about, how they can try, how you guys can try to figure out how to improve the pedestrian vehicle traffic.
And the thing is, you know, right now, we, we cater to tourism, you know, and we're inviting all this. So it's kind of like a double-edged sword.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we want the people here. It's part of our commerce and, and economy. But, you know, like some of the local people, they're not, that's not their game. And they're just trying to get their job done. And now they got frustrated with all the people on the streets and, but.
I understand that completely. But, you know, I'm hoping, you know, we can work together, you know? I'm willing to have my officers do whatever they can to improve the safety of the community. And, you know, talking with the mayor and Heidi this morning, I, I, I think we, and it sounds like it may be pushed forward a little faster, you know, moving just the community advisement of the ordinances and, and moving forward with the enforcement. So I know, speaking with Amy and Dewey today after our morning meeting, yeah, they're, they're ready for it. So I just need to cut them loose once we, we know we're good.
Yeah, I think we've been given warning every year. So we need.
Sorry.
I said, I believe we've been given warnings every year that this is enforceable and we should do it. So we can blast it out again, but we, we need to move forward.
Okay, not a problem.
Yeah, we had a, we had a good, good meeting, as Michael says this morning. And a lot of it just talked about, once you start and, you know, consistent enforcement action, then people's behaviors are gonna change, you know? I mean, no one's taking it serious before, because there's, you know, there has not been a lot of enforcement. Even if it's been there, it's been very sporadic, very intermittent. So, yeah, I think we just have to let people know, hey, there are people that are watching. There are people that are care. They care. And we, we need to think about the safety of everyone on There are people that are care, uh, they care and we, we need to think about the safety of everyone on the roads here. You know, especially in these summer months when there's a pile of kids on the roads, you know? So um, yeah, it's, you know, our community is unique in that respect. Unfortunately, everybody likes the road, mainly the kids. So, but yeah, well, I think, I think once we start here, we'll, we'll start seeing some uh, behavioral shift on uh, on ATVs. And hopefully, you know, a few folks slowing down as well. So.
Uh, today is, I don't even know what today is, Monday. Today's Monday. I worked Sunday. So today's Monday enforcement beginning Wednesday.
Sounds good to me.
Enforcement beginning Wednesday. It's that simple.
Yeah, they'll give us some time. We'll put out some stuff tomorrow on uh, city's webpage. Just get it going. And yeah, we posted it post office, a few other places and just get, get started here. So.
That works.
Sounds good. Um, I mean, I see your hands, is your hand still up or from the first one or did you have a follow up?
I have a follow up. This has been an ongoing discussion in different facets, uh, meet there. You know, we've had discussions about new speed signs, the blind corner. This has been ongoing for a couple of years, blah, blah, blah. We do live in a small community and we don't expect our VPSOs to say the things that, you know, I'm not in favor of ticketing every person who goes down the street or, you know, whatever. I'm not saying like, I'm not saying that I want to bring the hammer down on people. Like we, we do have our tourist base economy. We love our summer people. You know, like they, some of those people are my favorite people in the whole world. I look forward to them every year. My point is that, just what I said, and I don't want to be misconstrued, you know, there's a lot of facets to traffic safety. There are a lot of pieces to that. Um, when it is a local kid that I see driving, you know, carelessly, which has only happened maybe once or twice in forever, I call those parents because I know they have their numbers. But I don't have every summer parent number. So I don't want to be misunderstood here in this recording or out in the public or by my fellow council members. I am not saying, you know, hard cut to, you know, ATV uses on our roads. We all voted in to, to affirm that legality here. I'm just saying that there is way too many young children and driving vehicles that they shouldn't be driving. Uh, so that is my stance. Uh, the speeding thing is a whole different ball of wax. Yes, all of their, uh, all of us locals have been uh, guilty of one infraction or another. Um, but whatever we need to do to support, reminding people and enforcing those things and keeping kids safe is my stance on this topic. So I'm sorry, you know, I'm, I'm always so redundant. Uh, I appreciate your time and I appreciate the VPSOs that we have and the program for being here.
Thank you, Harmony. And yeah, I, I mean, we're not putting the hammer down or anything like that. You know, we just want people to understand that we're watching, that you, you will be warned, that parents will be notified. And hopefully at that point, the parents do their job and then we don't have to, you move to the next stage of fining and moving on from there. You know, it, it's one of those things where we only can do so much. I mean, really, it's the parents' job, not our job. I hate to say it, but it's the truth. And uh, what we can do is bring it to their attention, even though obviously they know. But hopefully once they know we're watching and that it may cost them some money down the road, maybe they'll tighten the reins on those children who are riding who shouldn't be. And uh, at some point, if it comes to impounding a vehicle, we'll, we'll cross that road when we get to it. But um, until then, you know, I'm open to any suggestions from the council on the best way to handle the problem. So much appreciated. Appreciate your questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Anyone else from council? In or public? Laurel, you have a question?
Yes, if you can hear me okay?
Yep, we got you loud and clear.
All right. Well, uh, one of the best ways to utilize that great new training that Amy's gotten in teaching is to connect her with the children directly. So I would love to see a collaboration where there's an opportunity to connect the kids in a fun and happy event. Bring them down, maybe to the fire hall, have some ice cream, hang out and have a conversation with them about what the expectations are and why it matters. So, um, that'd be a great way.
That's great, Laurel, and I love that. And I appreciate that also. I was speaking with Heidi in the past and this morning. My, my goal was to send Amy to an ATV safety instructor class. So she would be able to uh, provide training to the kids here and hopefully a fun and safe environment. And uh, so they would know the safety aspects of the four wheeler and what's expected. But until then, uh, your idea is great. I love it. So I will make sure that happens.
Yeah. And I think we've brought in, it was a couple of years ago, but um, we definitely brought in ATV safety training to the kids. So that's another way to do it is to collaborate with those folks who, who already are doing that kind of instruction. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much. Love the idea.
Thanks Laurel.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Sounds good, Michael. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you this morning as well.
Yeah, I see you may.
Thanks for.
Everybody. Thank you very much. Thanks for having me. Have a great evening.
Yep, always good to see you. All right. Let's see. That concludes item G. Item H, public, uh, public presentation for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening, Laurel?
Okay, you can hear me okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yep, still got you loud and clear.
Okay. Um, obviously as we're saying, there's lots going on. So things happening in the community right here, right now. Saldovia Village Tribe has a paint, painting instructor coming in on the ferry. And she's going to be doing some paint parties with kids and adults over the next couple of days. And that will move us right into the Saldovia Summer Solstice Music Festival with Thursday night being the open mic. And that's a free, free night for folks to go and check that out. And then Friday and Saturday, uh, evening sessions plus, um, on Friday, I think we're going to see a kids singing time and storytelling time in the morning. There's going to be all the busking opportunities throughout the afternoon where all the different performers from the festival can be found around town. Uh, performing mid afternoon, late afternoon, there's a contradance workshop happening. And uh, then hitting the festival and then on Saturday, there's a whole bunch of workshops available for folks. So um, lots of great things. The Arts Council is an arm of the city of Saldovia. And it takes um, a whole community to bring all the things together. So certainly always appreciate the work of all the volunteers and the ways that the different agencies in town are able to collaborate on that. Something to look forward to. And then uh, next week, Saldovia Bible Chapel will have a child evangelism fellowship. Uh, five days of activities for kids. And we're always glad when there's folks willing to come to town and hang out with our children. And then um, trying to think if there's any other great thing at the end of the month. But then just so you know, as soon as the end of the month is done, we're right into the fourth of July. So busy days, uh, happening all around. And um, just uh, like everybody said, let's keep an eye out for our kids. And, and I got no problem uh, telling a kid if I think that they're not being safe. And I yelled at a bunch of kids on scooters who were going full throttle the other day on Saturday. And kids who are tearing down hills in the streets, uh, without, without being safe. And, and then I follow up by letting their parents know. So Harmony, if you need phone numbers, check in with me. I got those out of towners. Those summer folks, I got their numbers. Give me a call. Thank you all.
Love it Laurel. Oh, takes it.
Thanks Laurel. Appreciate the update. Anyone else Liz?
No, Mr. Mayor, don't see anybody else.
Okay, sounds good. That concludes item H. That'll take us to item I, committee and advisory board reports. And we have the Saldovia Planning Commission Report, uh, Draft Abatement Ordinance. And Randy Sweet is here this evening. Welcome Randy.
Thank you. Um, so I'm going to just give a, a quick overview of, of the work of the planning commission. And then um, a little bit of a deeper dive into the abatement ordinance. So um, kind of continuing, so um, this is our work plan in progress. And uh, next, next slide please. So we've had a workshop meeting with, with the um, city council. And we're just doing some final touchups on the central business district. Um, well, uh, the planning commission will be just uh, doing some fine tuning on dwelling units, junkyard, uh, lumberyard and school definitions and placement in the land use table. And then one of the things that we wanted to check in with you about is um, in terms of sending over the ordinance, um, your thoughts about when you would like it for your preliminary hearing or preliminary notice and then your hearing. So I'm trying to have that communication and interaction so that you're not bombarded with a bunch of things and kind of know what's coming up. So that's something that you all have worked on. And then um, I do have your, your uh, calendar with me. So um, so for example, I'm not sure if you'll be meeting on the twenty third of June. And then in July, you have the fourteenth and the twenty eighth, um, as far as dates go. So uh, just checking in to see what would be, what would be workable for you.
What are you thinking Heidi? Probably the fourteenth, I'm assuming.
I would assume depending on how that July second meeting goes.
Okay, so, so we'll, we'll, we'll just tag, flag that for now. And obviously if something changes, it will, but this way at least it kind of gets things um, on the, on the radar. Uh, the next, um, as you know, the comprehensive plan is being updated and it's in progress. Uh, and then we have a couple of, just a couple of items. One is, um, there was some discussion about making sure that we, we connected with the community organizations and asked them to give their viewpoints on, on the um, updating of the uh, comprehensive plan. So they, they are also part of the uh, conversation in terms of updating the plan. And so uh, there's a letter in your packet that's going, that will be going out to the organizations. And then another thing that has um, come up is that the legislature this year um, added a housing development plan option into the comprehensive plan statute. So basically, um, housing is a big issue in Alaska and for us. And so we're, so that's being added. And so this is just, I'm going to read you a short statement by the sponsor state, the sponsor statement for this bill. It passed and it's awaiting transmission to the governor's office. So it says, Alaska is experiencing a housing crisis. The people of our state have been stretched past their limits by rapidly increasing costs and a scarcity of adequate housing. Our population is stagnant and rapidly aging and exodus of working age people has left the state with chronic labor shortages. Housing is a crisis in every Alaskan community, urban and rural, and every community needs to be a part of resolving it. SB fifty adds a new section to the statutory description of first and second class boroughs comprehensive plans, encouraging inclusion of a, of a housing plan. The title twenty nine also recognizes the importance of community planning with longstanding requirements for cities and boroughs to adopt and periodically update comprehensive plans. In the past, housing has often been considered a general land use issue, but the topic has reached a degree of urgency that necessitates its own consideration. This legislation will prompt boroughs to give specific attention to housing needs of their community, critically examine their housing policies and engage the public via the comprehensive planning process. So um, SB fifty is a way to broaden Alaska's response to the housing crisis by prompting discussion, examination and strategizing at the local level. Some challenges will be resolved without state intervention. Simultaneously, communities will identify remaining obstacles and local priorities, which will make any subs, excuse me, subsequent state action more effective and efficient. Um, and he's just urging the support for this, but it's something that's not a requirement. Of course, there's no budget increment, but, but it's just, um, I wanted you to be aware of this. It's just something that, and it's also as we're going through the comprehensive plan update, you know, is this, we, we've, we've said it's a priority as far as the discussions that the council has had. But is this something that we think merits uh, attention in terms of putting it into our comprehensive plan? And we'll have those discussions and then, you know, as that, as that occurs, then we'll have more information about what the best answer is, you know, for, for our, our work. Um, then on the um, next page, um, the building permit, zoning permit, um, it, it's underway. Um, and it will include top, topographical impacts. It's something that we had talked about previously and, and a project checklist, but it's underway. And if the staff, as I'm talking, if the staff has any additions, please, um, please jump in. Um, then we're having, continuing to have conversations on the Cedar Street Extension. And this city staff has worked with, is working with the property owner and, and that's just kind of um, ongoing. And then the last one that we're, uh, last item here is the abatement of public nuisances and abandoned property. And so if we can go on to the next, and then the next slide. So the topic of abatement, public nuisances, abandoned property, that's been a, a, it's been a concern. Um, and then uh, a, a little while ago, um, some prior, I'm not sure if it's prior or current council members, but had brought up the topic, um, as something that needed to be addressed. Um, we've had advice from the city attorney to update the scope and language. And this matter just needs continuous improvement and make sure that we address issues in a fair and consistent manners and it's timely and uses best practices. And, and as part of the effort, there's been a reaching out to see what other communities do. So we can, we can bring some of the timely, um, um, updates that have done by other people. So we can learn from that and go forward. And so on the um, next slide, the, the idea is to have a broader definition of public nuisance. So just clarity around what we're talking about and then making sure that we're addressing things in the best interest of the city and it's, you know, being able to abate the nuisances and, and, and their impacts in economic development, environmental protection and other police power reasons. And then again, we want to have that clear standard procedures, notice and enforcement for public nuisances. It's kind of going back to our prior conversation that the city council was just having. It's just having that consistency and you know, do people know what the rules are? Can we, you know, making sure that people are aware and, and there's clarity and there's consistency and that we deal with problems in a timely manner. Uh, the next two slides have, just have the information in terms of the topics that are covered within this, within this ordinance. And then just, um, it, I guess, just wanted to check in with you. Um, on the last slide is, you know, concerns, ideas. You have a copy of the, uh, ordinance in your, in your packet. And um, I wasn't sure if you, if the council would prefer to have a workshop on this to, to, you know, to have that opportunity or not. Um, and then, and, and then again, just looking forward to, you know, to what your schedule's like and when you would like to receive this. So we, we have that kind of folded into your work schedule. And then if staff, if there's anything else that you have to say on this.
I would just note that the ordinance is on page 16 of the laydown on the actual language. And then following that, I believe attachment A is a clean copy.
And I think a workshop at some point would be probably a pretty good idea.
Or it's introduced.
I would, I would think so. Yeah. Yeah. I think it, I don't think it has to be a long one. It'd be nice just to kind of get into the nuts and bolts of it and thought process on some of the, some of the stuff.
We can reach out, Mr. Mayor, and see what, what the schedule looks like for council in the next month to get together for a, a short workshop.
Yeah, obviously after the 4th of July and all that stuff and get through, get through this. But yeah, I think that'd be helpful for everyone. So.
And any, any other questions on planning?
Any other questions, comments from anyone on council for Randy on anything that she's covered so far?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, yeah. I'm glad to see that we've got these issues coming up and we can clean up our ordinances and clarify issues that have been in the past. So I'm glad to see this coming forward. And I would say, yes, a workshop would be the best way to approach it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Vivian. Thank you for the update, Randy.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, that concludes item I. And then that takes us to item J, which is the administrative reports and the finance report is the first one. And let's see, I don't have numbers on these. Those are, that is in the regular packet on page seven. And these are just written tonight. So if anyone has any questions, comments, go ahead and just chime in. Page seven. Yeah, seven of the regular packet.
Yeah. I'll put tabs on that one. No, that shouldn't be here. That's perfect works. It should be this one. Yes.
Yeah, obviously, as we start approaching the, we're almost to the end of our fiscal year here, everything should, should start to hit pretty close to high 90s, high 80s, low 90s for both revenues and expenditures. And it looks like a lot of these are getting pretty, pretty close to that. So.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll say dock is a little bit low on projected revenues because we bill out quarterly.
Yeah, that said, 70%. I saw that. So a lot of these are typical. We were usually pretty in tune with the stuff that's either lagging or, or a little bit ahead. So. Any questions, comments on the finance report tonight? Okay. Can roll on down to the harbor report. That's on page 11. That's right after the finance report. Obviously, things are starting to get busy around the harbor. I see some summer, some of the summer helps back. We got a lot of boats starting to show up, people coming and going, lots of different work going on here. A lot of fishermen taking off this week. So obviously, things are a little different down there now with fast ferry not parking down there. I see their ramp still down there. So I've, I've seen him use it. I, I think the one time when it was blowing kind of oddballs. So is that the plan to, that's the emergency backup if they, if they have to come into the harbor?
You know, I haven't heard anything officially, but that seems like that was what they did last time and, and we can follow up and see what, what that looks like.
Gotcha. Yeah, it's definitely freeing up some, freeing up some space down there. So for the, for the transient, for sure. So. All right. Any questions, comments on the harbor report tonight? Okay. The last one is the Public Works Maintenance Report and that's on page 12, right after the Harbor Report. Yeah, I noticed the preparing the junkyard quote unquote for brush burning, clearing. Is that the, that's the lot across from our, from the fence city lot out the road? Is that the one they're talking about?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I've been seeing as I drive by, if you peek back in there, you can see there's some work starting to happen back in there. So I'd be in favor of.
Is that all that alder brush you had, you was looking at it?
Yeah, yeah. I am in favor of killing all alders. So. Anything you guys want to add on, on the Public Works?
I have a couple of things in the city manager's report I've done. They've just been, they're busy, busy, busy all the time.
Yeah. Good. Yeah, lots of stuff happening. So that's, that's good.
I would also point out at the bottom that operator Miller did complete her water treatment one and water treatment, water treatment one and water distribution one courses and passed both exams. So that's very exciting. And David Botero is also working on his water treatment one and water distribution one courses. So. Now we have Riley on and he's, he's also starting to move into the rotation up there, not on his own yet, but you know, learning the ropes. So we'll have.
And he's already started, he's working full time now. He's started. Okay, great. Good. Good, good. All right. Excellent. Good. Any additional questions, comments from council on the Public Works Report? All right. Thanks you guys for those. Takes us to item K, public hearings, none. Item L, unfinished business, none. Excuse me, item M, one, new business. Action memorandum 25-11 declaring a city council seat vacant and directing the city clerk to provide public notice, seeking qualified candidates for the appointment. And Liz, I'll go ahead and let you share a little more on that. Do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So council member Kennedy had provided his letter of resignation. So this action memorandum would declare that seat vacant in accordance with AS 29. And on the following pages, there will be a notice of city council vacancy, which can be applied for and submitted to my office as, along with a financial disclosure, entertain candidates and any qualified candidates would come before you at the July 28th meeting.
Okay. Do you know off the top of your head, let's see, how long you have to be, is it six months? You have to be in, in the city? You have to.
You have to be a registered voter for six months.
Okay, registered voter for six months. Okay, sounds good. My, my brain's already starting to recruit and I'm, I'm thinking so. All right, sounds good. Six, yep, there it is. Okay, perfect. Perfect. All right.
Yeah. And I think those requirements are on the notice of city council vacancy.
Yep.
Years of age, registered voter for the city of Saldovia and a resident of the city and have resided in the city limits for a period of six months.
Has there anybody stepped up the plate yet that's?
Have you had any interest yet or?
Nobody has.
Informally?
Nobody has informally approached.
Okay. All right. Well, hopefully when this gets out, we'll, and it's formally announced and stuff, then we'll hopefully get a little, a little, little interest. So. All right, sounds good. Thanks, Liz. And then we'll go ahead and take it on to council for discussion. If you guys have any additional questions, comments for action memorandum 25-11? I'll just offer one comment. Yeah, this is pretty much housekeeping. Anytime we have a vacancy, it needs to be noticed and then hopefully we can get some interest expressed from the public. So I'll be in support of action memorandum 25-11. Any other questions, comments on action memorandum 25-11 before we go to public?
Mr. Mayor, I will offer one thing if I may.
Yeah.
The city clerk did point out that it is interesting timing because the actual declaration of candidacy opens August 1st. So that August 1st to the 15th will be seeking candidates for four seats. I believe it is a, it will be council member Kennedy's seat. Jack Barber, council member Barber was appointed as well. So those are two shorter term seats for appointment. And then I can't.
Councilmember Rojas and councilmember Keith Lee.
Yeah, so councilmember Rojas and councilmember Keith Lee. So seeking somebody in the short term until the October elections, but then four seats open during the election season this year. So keeping that in mind, you know, depending on if those guys are going to re-up or not and be an incumbent to run, but certainly there's opportunity for people to step up if they want to join city council.
Okay, you said Rojas and Keith Lee are the two regular seats?
Correct.
Okay. Holy cow. All right. That's a lot of seats. All right. Well, if people want to get involved in local government, now is the perfect opportunity. So. All right. Sounds good. Anyone from the public wish to weigh in or with anything on action memorandum 25-11?
I'm not seeing any hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sounds good. We'll go ahead and bring action memorandum 25-11 back to council for final action, which would lead us to look for a motion to approve action memorandum 25-11.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve memorandum. Oh, now I forgot what it was. Twenty.
Twenty five dash eleven.
Twenty five dash eleven.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve action memorandum 25-11 by Keith Lee with a second by Peyton. Any further discussion on, on action memorandum 25-11 before we vote? Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and vote on the approval of action memorandum 25-11. All those in favor? Langbart?
Aye.
Barber? Rojas?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye.
And Keith Lee?
Aye.
All right, motion passes with five in the affirmative and zero opposed. And that's the approval of action memorandum 25-11. Second item tonight of new business, item M2, resolution 25-53, a resolution of the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska, accepting an environmental protection agency community grant in the amount of $1,160,000 and authorizing the issuance of RFP dash, or number 01-2026, lower raw water transmission line replacement project. And I'll go ahead and let the city manager discuss this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this has been on the books or on the docket for over a year and a half now. This grant actually comes forward as a congressional direct spending appropriation that was put forward through Senator Murkowski's office. And so we've been working with the EPA as well as with a, a technical advisor through the RCAC to complete the pre-award requirements. And then he also helped us draft the RFP. That draft RFP is on page 30 of your laydown. I'll point out that it is still a draft because it does have to be approved by the EPA. We did send them this copy of this draft last week and they were going to try to get it reviewed by the end of this week or early next week at the latest. And then once it's approved, we can issue it out, knowing that there wasn't a meeting until mid-July for the city council. We kind of put the cart a little bit of, of, in front of the horse in order to allow staff to be able to issue this. RFP once approved, if approved by the council this evening. Again, it is a draft RFP, so there will probably still be some changes regarding EPA criteria, whatever they, whatever feedback they give us. But it does have everything that they've requested so far. It should be fairly intact and hoping to hear back from you guys, any feedback you may have. This grant from them is again in $1,160,000. However, the overall project is $1,450,000. $250,000 of that is a match from the state of Alaska that we received also as a designated legislative grant last fiscal year 2025 or 2024. And then I'll have to double check that date. Things are flying by. And then a local contribution from the city of Saldovia has been committed of $40,000 and that would come out of the major maintenance and repair fund, which the city council does have that availability, that budget is available in that fund at this point. So any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Heidi. Appreciate that. We'll go ahead and open it up to council for any comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, what an incredible opportunity we have. The water system is so important to us. So it's excellent to see this come up to us. My question is, just a lot to my train of thought. My question is, does this, the money that we're getting, does it encompass the whole, the beginning to the end of this project for that $1,400?
According to the engineering estimate we have, yes. The project is a design build project in an effort to hopefully save some funds instead of having to go out for a whole design. Since it's a more simplified project, right? We're taking out a pipe, piece pipe, putting in a piece of pipe. So we are requesting for a design build, which would require a firm to either subcontract or be able to provide in-house engineering, work with the engineering work required at the beginning. But that is included in the cost estimate and we are hoping that we are able to cover the whole cost according to recent cost estimates that we've had. If you remember, this is one of those projects that has exponentially grown year after year. What, what the, the budget due to inflation. So we're trying to stay ahead of projects and make sure that we have enough buffer and contingency in. But it just seems like it's always, by the time the project comes around, that's, that buffer is gone. So I guess long way of saying we hope so and our cost estimates show that it will, but it, the the request for proposals, the bids that we, we receive will really, they'll really show whether that's true or not.
Okay. And what sort of timeframe are we looking at? Is that even in the project yet as far as the timeframe?
That will also depend on the proposals that we receive. We are pretty open. There is some permitting, light permitting that needs to be done, just approval through DEC to get this taken care of. Our engineer was estimating a year. I would really hope that we could do it more timely than that, but it's, it's going to depend on what we receive for those proposals.
Well, thank you. I mean, again, it's a wonderful chunk of money that we got. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Vivian. Anyone else? Questions or comments on resolution 25-53? Yeah, I'll just comment here. Yeah, I was talking with Heidi a little bit about this too, this morning. And yeah, kind of this was off my radar and I saw this again. So I was pretty excited about this to finally get this, hopefully something going. With the design build, yeah, I mean, this is a pretty small project in terms of scope, you know, and footprint. It's changing out, you know, basically a, a raw water line. So. It's changing out, you know, basically a, a raw water line, so hopefully we'll get a few contractors that are either capable or, or work with some smaller engineering firms that can turn this around pretty quick. And uh, and with the, the design build uh, process allows a little bit more flexibility too in terms of design and means and methods. Um, you know, we can, we can have a discussion throughout that process on what works. We have an opportunity to value engineer uh, and get it, you know, hopefully get it within the budget if it's, you know, assuming the engineers did their job on the cost estimate and inflation hasn't outpaced us here. Hopefully, we're still in the, in the ballpark here. So um, yeah, looking forward to getting this out, getting it rolling, uh, get the solicitation out and see what we get for feedback on um, on that. And hopefully, we get a few folks interested and can come up with a firm that'll, that'll be able to get the, get the job done, so.
I have a quick, is this a new transmission line or is it the repair of an existing line?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's the repair of our existing line, the lower thousand fifty feet. It's Thonewalt steel from the nineteen sixties, and it's already leaking. So we, we've had to do a few repairs in the last year. Um, but you know, they, they continue to um, expand and we need to replace this infrastructure.
So it'd be a new line? New line.
So there's no chance of dip line in it or anything?
Um, I think there is. I mean, that could be part of, part of this, so. Is if the cals come out and you could slip line, and I think that'd be, myself, I think that'd be a great way to go.
Cause I got access to the new machine.
That's a ten-inch line, right? Yeah, that's a ten-inch line and with our.
I mean, it'd be way cheaper to.
Well, yeah, yeah, for sure. You'd only have to basically dig it up at the corners too, so. Um, yeah, I think slip line is a great way to go, so I think um, definitely should be some discussion around that with the design build that, you know, can keep engineering costs pretty, pretty low if that's, you know, if that's what it comes up with, so. All right. Anyone else? Questions, comments on Resolution twenty-five dash fifty-three? Okay, anyone from public, Liz?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not have any hands raised.
Okay, we'll go and bring it back to council for uh, final action on, excuse me, Resolution twenty-five dash fifty-three, and I'll look for a motion for approval.
I'll approve motion twenty-five dash fifty-three.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, was that Meg that did the initial?
No, it was Harmony.
Was that Harmony? Okay. I saw stuff going on there. Okay. So we have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash fifty-three by Peyton. I believe the second was by Keith Lee. Any further questions, comments on Resolution twenty-five dash fifty-three before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go and vote on Resolution twenty-five dash fifty-three. All those in favor? Langbart?
Aye.
Barber?
Uh.
Rojas?
Aye.
Peyton? And Keith Lee?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes with five in the affirmative and none opposed. All right, thank you, everyone. That'll take us to the city manager's report, and this will be in your laydown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a lot happening um, right now, so quite a few updates. I'll just try to run through them here pretty quickly. Um, first of all, the, as you guys um, know from the past, just this past discussion, that the City of Saldovia did receive the award agreement for the Raw Water Transmission Line Replacement Project, and that was um, as stated, a congressional direct spending appropriation from Senator Murkowski's office, so we're happy to see that go through. Uh, once uh, that RFP is approved by the EPA, um, we can get it issued. So looking forward to, to seeing that project finally take off. Update on Jack LaFaye Dock Replacement Project, the Marad site visit was postponed. They're hoping to maybe reschedule for the fall. Uh, we are still closing out the approval for the National Marine Fisheries Service, and the local permit applications have been submitted to the Kenai River Center and the Army Corps of Engineers. We've also received the draft grant agreement from Marad, uh, which is in review, so things are moving forward and still on time. The Kachemac Bay uh, NRR, the National Estuarin Research Reserve Fresh Water Resource Workshop was held on Friday, June sixth. Myself and Amanda Miller were able to attend. Um, we had a lovely tour of the Homer Reservoir and their water treatment plant. That workshop focused on freshwater resource management, so it was um, really applicable and timely. They uh, emphasized groundwater discharge and recharge mapping, uh, which they are nearing completion for, for the Homer area. Um, there's some really cool things that they're doing uh, when it comes to studying groundwater and groundwater management in that area. And uh, of course, both Amanda and I were like, we need that, uh, so we were able to have great conversations with the hydrologists who've been working on it. Uh, we have actually already submitted a proposal through the, oh, I can't remember the name, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation last month for the Saldovia Wetlands Assessment that did include hydrology as part of it. Um, and so in speaking with KB NRR, if we are invited to do a full proposal, making sure that we really emphasize that part of the project and, and the importance uh, for our drinking water management, um, freshwater resource management over here. And we've invited the hydrologists to come over uh, to Saldovia to explore the area in preparation for that full proposal. Uh, they're looking at uh, early or late August to come to Saldovia, so that should be a real fun visit. Then also, speaking of KB NRR, the council met that week, um, just the day before, so on that Thursday, June fifth, and discussed their Saldovia Land Acquisition, or discussed all the proposals they'd received. Uh, they had eight different proposals for, I think it was four different projects uh, in total. So the, most of them um, were regarding these two projects. We had a few people submit in favor specifically of the Trina Lake Project and to the KB NRR, and it looks like a water treatment plan instead of plant. Um, so both the Saldovia projects were selected by KB NRR as potential projects for the uh, funding application proposals for uh, NRR's infrastructure funding. And those projects were the University of Alaska parcel that surrounds the water treatment plant uh, and the Trina Lake properties. So we'll continue to work with KB NRR and Kachemac Heritage Land Trust, uh, as well as those property owners uh, to see if we can come to um, some kind of a conclusion and an agreement in order to submit that proposal um, and potentially move forward if awarded on um, those land acquisitions. Also with KB NRR, um, it's, it's just been really, I can't, I can't say enough how um, how great it has been to work with them the last couple of months and uh, to be able to realize and utilize the assets that they have and, and the, the programs that they can provide. One thing that they are also trying to um, evaluate a little bit more is the near uh, shore fisheries and what those, the juvenile fish um, nursery habitats of Kachemac Bay um, are, are doing right now. And so with that, they are, have requested to do some beach staining by the fuel dock in Saldovia Bay. They, they've said they will not be blocking that boat launch ramp. It shouldn't impact people coming in and out. Uh, they'll be doing it for the four different weeks, uh, June ninth through thirteenth, July eighth through eleventh, July twenty-sixth through twenty-ninth, and August eighth through eleventh. Uh, so you'll see them out there. They have their own boat. They come over and they'll throw out some nets um, and, and do, do some studying of the, of that nearshore fish population um, and share the results with the community. Uh, we also, speaking of congressional direct spending, I was surprised that I received two emails last week um, from Senator Murkowski's office that two of our projects, the two of the city council's priority projects uh, were submitted, were selected by the senator and submitted to Senate Appropriations Subcommittee. Uh, one is for the Jack LaFaye Dock Gap Funding, which we did already receive. Um, that funding request from the Denali Commission, but depending on, once we get this construction RFP out and see how things go, uh, it could be worth uh, having a little bit uh, more if needed, so we'll see where that goes. Uh, and then funding for the Saldovia Fuel and Lube Improvement Project, um, that was for the, the big project, the full thing. Um, repairing walls, electricity, uh, insulation. So potentially, if that was something that we received, we could look at amending that project scope and doing a full building. Since I, that's something that the council's brought up, so we'll see if it makes it out of subcommittee. Our projects last year did not. Um, and this was one of them, so, but we can, we'll just keep waiting and, and see what happens. The FY twenty-four CDBG grant um, is still under the way, that at least that pre-award process and the environmental review is. It's quite a bit of paperwork, but I feel like I'm most of the way through it. I feel pretty confident that I will have all that paperwork submitted by the end of the week, um, so that we can move forward with that grant agreement and uh, potentially in an RFP here in the near future. Also, for our multi-purpose building generation improvements project, our new generator is in Alaska and on its way, so that's exciting. That it's going to be here before the June thirty deadline. And um, and then we'll see how much of the left, the funds that are left, we can get appropriated for installation um, and any other parts that we need um, once it gets here.
Did we talk about what, what are we doing with the old generator? Are we going to surplus that or auction it or?
Yeah, so typically that would be an auction item, unless there's something else you guys have in mind for it.
Okay. Yeah, we can think about that, but.
Yeah.
All right.
City Office, uh, we were on hold for the insulation project. Um, the RFP we issued, we received four proposals and they were all pretty close to the same uh, cost and well above our budget for all four of them. So um, and speaking with some of those contractors as well as internally, uh, we've had some thoughts about reissuing that RFP, um, but loosening those specifications of what we're looking for in types of insulation and to see what kinds of proposals that we'll receive. So not necessarily spray foam, it could be blueboard. Um, there could be other rev, um, other ideas that companies have for that. Um, and then making sure that we clearly define what that budget is. There was also a concern regarding a, a potential abatement needed, uh, and we did complete a test and there is no asbestos, so uh, no abatement concerns um, at this point in time, and then, and that removal will be, um, we'll do that internally uh, with our staff as remove the existing insulation, uh, depending on if a, a project gets selected and what that is. Uh, you asked, Mr. Mayor, about Public Works Projects. There is a lot going on on their board. I just, I think I put four or five new projects on their board today. Um, or crew while we're sitting there talking like, oh, let's not forget these things. Um, but I would also, I would like to just point out, uh, besides those projects in the day-to-day, uh, they are currently working on fixing the pressure washer. So I don't know if you guys have heard about that, but that is down. We have an electrical issue. Um, the breaker has been fixed, and now it's a, a matter of getting the crane operator back up and going, so they are working on that. Uh, as well as per the council's request, we did order a combo lock to um, fix, to lock that gate and secure the dock a little bit, um, to have that dock be a little bit more secure. And uh, we started talking about in, placing that combo lock. Um, and the crew decided to take the gates off and do a full sand and repaint of those gates, which was well um, overdue, and they look amazing. So one's back on, the other one's going on. Um, I think people will hopefully really um, like that. It's a small thing, but it's like, man, if we're gonna start fixing things to these gates, we might need a little love. So um, that's, that's a cool, smaller project that's being taken care of. Uh, once that lock is going on, we'll make sure to do an announcement, a public notice and um, calling, personally calling all of the crane users with a valid um, crane user applications with the city office and make that, make sure that they have the combo lock and letting people know that anybody who needs a combo lock to get ahold of the city.
Okay.
So I also need to let you guys know that the city's Alternative Method of System Supervision, Supervision Plan, and which is the plan that we have in place due to the fact that we don't have a water to uh, a water treatment to operator at the water treatment plant, which is what that plant requires. Um, so we have a Alternative Method of System Supervision that's been approved by DEC. Um, and that is in conjunction with Todd Cook out of the city of, well, he does it on his own, but he's from Homer. Um, he's their water treatment plant supervisor over there, um, and very certified, very knowledgeable um, gentleman. He's been our uh, remote supervisor for a couple of years now, a huge asset to the community. Um, really great to know that we um, have, can have him on speed dial, and he comes out and helps. So out over, he comes over and helps out every now and then. Um, and we've just been notified that we need to update this plan because we've had a change in personnel with Radzi leaving again. Now we have David up there and Amanda, and we're putting Riley on, so.
No issue with continued with the same plan, using him as RMW.
Yep, yep, he'll, he'll stay on board. Uh, we just have to update the plan. Last time it was approved by the city council. I'm not sure if I need to do that this time. Um, but if it does, then it will come before you guys um, as a piece of legislation updating the plan. Uh, otherwise, at least we're going to get it through DEC. Then with AML Grant Writing Services, this has uh, been pretty exciting conversations with them. Um, not a clear path forward yet, but we've had two meetings. Um, and we're going to be on a weekly, or weekly, monthly, I should say, uh, meeting schedule and discussing that transportation needs are one of the top prior, priorities. So whether that's um, repairing the historic boardwalk um, or looking at an alternative transportation pathway for Main Street along the Harbor Boardwalk. Um, and we're also in discussions with DOT about maybe some um, some short-term fixes on Main Street. Um, if they get back to us, hopefully we can continue those conversations, a pedestrian counter and some different things um, that we can use data to help make some informed decisions about what to do there in conjunction with the state. But uh, the AML Grant Writing Team is moving uh, ahead with looking for grant opportunities for the city. There is a, a rural community grant that's coming up um, that they thought would be an excellent uh, opportunity for the alternative transportation pathway, so they're going to start uh, drafting that proposal. That way it's ready um, for that. Or if the STIP come, uh, the call-out for projects for the STIP um, through the CTP, which is a Community Transportation Plan, uh, or Programs, Community Transportation Program, or the um, TAP, the Transportation Alternative Program become available for the state. We'll be ready for those. Um, they're also looking for funding for the dam. Um, and I um, asked them to keep their eyes open for any potential uh, facility projects for uh, if, if we're going to look at exploring, getting off the waterfront and having some kind of a, a, a heavy equipment storage complex um, up out of, out of the inundation zone. But I know we have a lot of projects going on in our CIP, so if there are other things that the council would like to see instead, please let me know, and we'll start that CIP conversation again for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-thirty-one um, time period here in earnest in August. So definitely be keeping on your mind what projects you would like to see included in the plan, what projects you'd like to see advanced in the plan. Um, and we'll, we'll start holding, holding those discussions again. Also with AML is, uh, and part of that discussion really was that we have these um, transportation issues or potential issues in the community. Um, and then even though we were part of the Safe Streets for All Grant with Kenai Peninsula Borough, it really didn't um, specify projects for the City of Saldovia, um, of which, you know, there are some needs here. So it was recommended that we sign on as one of the fifteen communities um, who would participate in the AML SS4A Action Bundle uh, that would create a more personalized plan that's relevant to the community uh, if awarded, so that's, they're applying for that funding, um, AML is, as a, as a bundle. Um, and if awarded, we would be signed on for that, and we uh, could potentially have that Saldovia specific plan uh, that would give more leverage for. uh, that would give more leverage for transportation projects in the future. So trying to work through that. Lastly, with AML, um, is they have requested or invited, uh, me to present at an upcoming webinar. They've been doing, um, pretty regular webinars regarding asset management. And, um, I know it's kind of been brought up in the background, uh, previously, but in December, when I went to the Winter Conference in Anchorage, I attended quite a few, uh, sessions, educational sessions about asset management. And I actually came back and I created an asset inventory list. Uh, so we have it on our, um, shared drive. I'm pretty proud of it. It needs a lot more work, but it does have, you know, all the streets and all the fire hydrants and, um, all the facilities and all the vehicles and, you know, there's things that we'd like to, uh, drill down more on, like some of the harbor infrastructure, the water treatment plant parts and things that they will grow with the asset management. But that's what we were discussing is, um, you know, how we got, how I got where it is now, um, with looking at different plans and documents and being able to pull them together. Cause surprisingly, we had most of that already on the shelf. So it was just a matter of putting it together. Uh, so sharing that with other communities, but then also discussing, um, that, you know, that there are some issues with trying to figure out how to get that knowledge back out to the community and to the council. And as part of discussions, when we talk about budget and when we talk about CIP, you know, how to make those reports. Um, so there are, AML is working on a, a tool that should help with that. And, um, they have offered to let us be a testing community. Once that comes available, that I should be able to plug in our asset inventory and then spit out reports is what I'm being told, um, that can be utilized, uh, for those, uh, bigger discussions. But it's all a work in progress and I just wanted to share because I think it's a great way. We've been, uh, very fortunate in working with AML and now KB NRR and some of these other partners, um, but also ensuring that we're giving back where we can. So we will all, I'll share where we're at with it and what we hope to do with it moving forward. And maybe that will inspire some other communities to take advantage of it, of their programs as well. Randy already gave an update on the 2014 Comprehensive Plan Update Process. That letter will go out tomorrow to those collaborative partners. And, uh, tentatively, we're looking at hosting an in-person meeting with AML here in town about the Comprehensive Plan on July 9th. So they're going to look, they were looking at flights, um, looking at their schedule. They're hoping to have big printed visuals so that people can come in, that same information that's on that, uh, story map will be provided in person with even broader discussion about really how is the plan working now? What isn't working in the plan now? What do people want to see move forward? What kind of, um, suggestions do they have for implementation? And then being able to take that feedback back and draft the plan and then bring that forward as a draft again for review. So, uh, hopefully everybody puts that on their calendar for July 9th potentially, uh, tentatively. And we'll let you guys know, um, if things shift as we get a little bit closer. We, last couple of things, um, we did, uh, uh, we have engaged with LG Rayfield to complete the FY25 audit. Uh, and, you know, they did point out, as I know they did, uh, in discussion with the city council, that we do continue to see annual improvement. Um, and that includes improvement on the hours required for the audit. They have their standard set of hours. Uh, in the last two years, we did go a little bit over that. Um, but each year it keeps getting better. So we hope to continue to see that improvement um, every year. And of course, we're still working with AMI as our, um, as for preparation for that audit. So that will become, uh, uh, that'll start happening more here in earnest, uh, in the next couple of weeks. Uh, so that we can be ready to, to have that audit complete in the next couple of months. For employment vacancies and hiring, we're still looking for, uh, backup for Senior Meals Cook Assistant Cook. Um, we do have one applicant and have an interview scheduled, uh, later that week or later this week for that position. North Works, Northwest Clerks Institute, I just want to, uh, say a big thank you and congratulations to City Clerk Dyer, who just got back from her Professional Development Two Training, Level Training, uh, Level Two in Tacoma, Washington last week. And we had, had a chance to fully dive in and, and talk about what an experience it was, but, um, sounds like you had some pretty valuable, um, less, not some, sorry, sessions and, and some, some, uh, it was, that it was worthwhile. I don't know if you want to share more about it.
That's a very worthwhile experience. It's clerks from the states of Washington, Oregon, and Alaska that get together and you end up with a valuable networking and informational sessions and experience and a lot of people to draw experience from when you have questions. So it's extremely valuable. So thank you very much for the support.
Um, okay. So moving on, Susan B. English School Pool Update. Just wanted, in case this wasn't on your guys' radar, I wanted to let you guys know that the Sodovia Recreation Service Area, uh, did request a 0.25 mill rate increase, which was improved by the KPB Assembly. So you guys will see that go into effect. Um, additionally, they did also decrease the overall mill rate for the borough. So while we have a 0.25 increase, we actually had a 0.45, uh, increa, decrease from the borough mill rate. So you should see a point to decrease overall, um, in your next property tax bill. So we're up and down a little bit of shifting, but it's, you know, there is a little bit of a decrease there. So far, there is discussion about potentially a, a borough-wide or a wider, um, borough service area for all pools. Um, because if you have not heard or seen the mayor, the mayor, the governor, uh, did veto line item veto education. And so with that, uh, the BSA increase is less than it was last year at about 500 a student. And, um, there is, you know, some background discussion about potentially, like I said, having that, that borough-wide recreational service area to help fund pools. And I think that conversation will probably kick up more in earnest. Uh, now that KPBSD has also issued letters of non-retention to all pool managers, theater techs, and library aides for the district. So KPBSD will have a special meeting on June 6th. And they've stated in their announcement for that meeting that they will, uh, be advancing a budget at that time on June 26th, that they expect will have less money in it than the one described closing pools and theaters. Which if you guys saw, that one was pretty much dismal. It was down to bare bones, um, for the budget. And, uh, and so that'll be probably a pretty heartbreaking discussion, um, that they'll be going through on June 26th. Uh, I'll, I'll watch the borough meeting tomorrow and I'm going to watch that meeting on the June, on that, that meeting on June 26th. I'll let you know what I hear. In the meantime, the Sodovia Recreational Service Area did hold their meeting on June 3rd regarding next steps and submitted a draft proposal to KPBSD for continued operations of the pool through the 2025, 2026 school year. Discussions about, uh, between those entities about the proposal will take place this week. Uh, and that's, um, in, with a kind of the general consensus that this is a short-term plan to be able to keep the pool open, um, for the next year as the district and borough and communities work through what the long-term plan is. Uh, which is sounding like it's going to have a, a greater, uh, a greater impact than just Susan B. English School and the Milchick, um, now that we're talking about, uh, the rest of the communities as well. Any questions on that one? Nope.
No, I'm sure there's going to be more. So.
Yes. So, uh, moving on through the last couple, we did receive our draft PSI, uh, which was that periodic safety inspection for the dam. I haven't had a chance to go through it, but I will. Village, uh, Village Safe Water is still, um, working through trying to get the solicitations out for those three projects that we have with them. Septic lift station replacement project, one of the pumps doesn't seem to be operating correctly. The Public Works Crew will pull it out this week to examine it further as well installed, better, better pole connections that were recommended. Um, and we still have that little hiccup about sourcing an American iron and steel certified chain for pulling the pumps for maintenance. Uh, that we're hoping to be able to remedy sometime in the future. Uh, and lastly, we have had a repeater issue. If, uh, for those who are not aware, um, the Sodovia Fire and EMS radios operate off of a repeater up in like the attic area above the school. It went down a week and a half ago, um, and the community lost all radio connection, Fire and EMS lost all radio service. Um, they were able to get a temporary, uh, loner repeater installed. So the radios are now operational. Uh, and, and the Fire and EMS can communicate through radios. However, Homer Dispatch still can't connect, communicate, um, to Sodovia through the repeater. So they're still calling, um, dispatch by cell phone to page out calls. Um, it seems to be working. Of course, it's not the best uh, scenario and the department is in the process of obtaining a new repeater. Um, that'll take a while. So.
What's the cost on that? Any, any, I mean, just ballpark?
Ballpark, we're hearing between 16 and 20,000.
Okay.
But the department does have some budget. So that'll, they'll have to look at what that looks like for the, for the budget. And then, um, if this, if city funds are needing to be dedicated to that. So.
Yeah. And I know we talked a little bit about if, um, Michael's group is able to cover fuel this year for FY26. I think we had, we had probably still had some appropriated in our budget. So we might be able to do a one-for-one there or something, at least have a discussion about that and see if we can't come up with any gap funding or something like that. So, yeah, that's obviously a critical piece of infrastructure that we don't want to have, be without for too long. So.
Yes, agreed. And as I've shared, um, that with the EMS chief, um, not EMS, sorry. The dispatch chief Jen, she's been working through this and I, I've definitely encouraged, please just get it ordered, get it here and we'll figure it out from there.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, um, at least she's on the, on the same, uh, wavelength and, and I'm, I'm guessing the department is as well. So, uh, they're doing everything they can right now to, to get that here as fast as possible.
Good.
And that's really what I have for the report. Everything else we've kind of touched on. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
All right. Any additional questions, comments for the city manager, for the manager's report? All right. Thank you, Heidi. Lots of good information. Things happening as, uh, as usual. That'll take us to item O, informational items not requiring action. Let's see fiscal year 2026 will begin July 1, 2025, as we just talked about. Uh, city of Sodovia offices will be closed Friday, July 4th, 2025 in observance of Independence Day. Item P, executive session, none. Item Q, council and mayor comments concerning items not on the agenda. Langvart, anything this evening?
No comment.
Barber?
No comment.
Rojas?
Uh, thanks everyone for all your hard work. Have a good evening.
Uh, Peyton?
None. Thank you.
Keith Lee?
No comment this evening.
Sounds like everybody wants to go play. Got beautiful house. All right. Um, yeah. Thanks you guys. Thanks to the staff. Appreciate, uh, everybody pulling all the information together and keeping things rolling here. So, um, next meeting will be on Monday, July 14th. So this was our only meeting we had in June. Uh, so that'll be good. Everyone can get through the holiday here and then we'll get back to business here mid, mid-July. So, uh, I'll look for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn with a second. Any objection?
I have one comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to thank the state of Alaska for restocking the slew with King salmon.
Oh, there you go. Yes, that's, that's a good point. Um, yes. Well, I have, we had someone.
A little writing of letters and that, but they came through.
We've, we have, apparently there's a lot of Kings coming back this year. We've had a lot of people being very successful and a lot of happiness down there lately. So, and some folks were commenting on the stocking effort. So that's, that's pretty exciting that they went out to help. And so that's cool. Good, good. All right. With that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Yep. Good night.